In the center aisle in front of the exit door or in front of the side exit. No disruption in part of our meeting will be allowed. If you wish to record any portion of someone's public comment for the meeting, do not record it from your seat. The board appreciates all of our community members' contributions to the state's public comments section in the board meeting. This will be our next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Our first speaker is Miranda Valentes to be followed by Tova Ringo.
Good evening. My name is Miranda Valentes. And here we pass, both my children will be gone from this school without written decision, without notice and without any other information to respond. This morning, the district said, hopefully that a denial letter for the community of enrollment should have been sent but wasn't. And that the principals only manipulated their decision to them informally. One white dog and one revenue. Despite that, the withdrawal is still possible. Because of this, my children have now been out of school for four weeks. And on the same day, the withdrawal happened, I informed the principal about concerns regarding how to administer. That history makes it even more important that this decision be reviewed carefully and transparently. I am not asking for paperwork to be created after the fact. I'm asking the board to review the principal's decision itself. Because the withdrawal was carried out before any proper procedure or documentation existed. The district has always said that the well-being of students is a top priority. What happened to my children did not reflect that priority. And I am simply asking that this decision be revised.
Thirty seconds.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Tova Ringo to be followed by Jamie Moore.
My name is Tova and I'm speaking as a special needs mom. I'm going to share some things I am thankful for. Recently, I followed up on some comments I made at the board meeting in April of 2022, asking for special needs students to receive body awareness and safety education. What I did not know was that in 2018, Georgia's Aaron's Law required public schools to implement annual age-appropriate sexual abuse and assault awareness and prevention education for all students. The law states that students are to receive instruction designed to teach students how to identify safe and unsafe targets and know how to report to a trust and a bill. I'm extremely thankful that the county is now adapting the school district scriptural. So students like my son will receive this essential instruction this year. Additionally, last May, I mentioned that my son's school did not have school pictures taken during this school year because the picture companies refused to go to his school based on the number of students attending the school. By 6:00 Thursday next morning, I had an email stating the communications department would help with school pictures the next year. This year, my son was excited to have his school pictures taken and the communication department even added a border with the school's name. Thank you, Daniel and the communications department.
Thirty seconds.
Lastly, I'm thankful that my son's bus ride to school is now an hour or less. This helps greatly with behavior. I am grateful for the positive changes that help students with special needs like my son. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jamie Moore to be followed by Heather Tollybauer.
My name is Jamie Moore and I'm a Cobb County resident and parent. In the statement read this afternoon, you did not answer a single question the public has asked for the past 22 days. You didn't address the consent judgment. You didn't address the admitted behavior. You didn't address the documented stuff. You tried to reframe this as a conversation about focusing on students. But focusing on students is far more than looking at grades. If grades were the only thing that mattered, we wouldn't measure behavior, conduct, or character. Students do not benefit when a board accuses misconduct. Students do not benefit when accountability is treated as a threat. Students do not benefit when silence is the default response to dishonesty. What happened in this case wasn't a private disagreement or a family matter. It involved actions that raised serious questions about judgment and integrity. You've said this board is made up of everyday people. Everyday people lose their jobs for far less. Everyday people are held accountable. And everyday people do not get to hide behind a prepared statement. A statement does not fix this. Silence for 22 days does not fix this. And pretending this is private does not fix this. Your statement exposed more than you intended. It showed this board's character problem isn't isolated. It showed public trust is disposable. It showed other interests are protected before children. And it showed that even proven misconduct is ignored. That is the worst possible lesson to teach our students. If this board truly wants to focus on students, start by modeling the behavior we expect from them. Honesty, accountability, and the courage to confront wrongdoing, not cover it.
Our next speaker is Heather Tollybauer to be followed by Jessica McGrant.
Good evening. I'm Heather Tollybauer with Washington Southern Cobb. We just heard the board chair claim this board has no authority over personal matters. That occurred before someone was elected, but let me be clear about the timeline. The vice chair was illegally misappropriating his client's funds while he ran for this board. He litigated this case while serving as a sitting board member and settled it three weeks ago while he was your vice chair. This was in ancient history. This was happening while he was meeting, voting, and chairing the audit committee. Which means there is no daylight between his personal fraud and his public service. None. You claim no board member can affect one student or $1 outside board meetings, but being a board member requires public trust. The vice chair violated that trust when he defrauded someone out of $250,000. You say you want to explore the personal lives of board members, but this isn't a divorce proceeding. This is a confessed judgment where he admitted to fraud. It speaks directly to his ability to behave ethically and exercise sound judgment. If he can't be trusted with someone else's money in his personal life, why should we trust him with our tax dollars? Let me remind you, you have the authority to remove him as vice chair. You have the authority to pledge that you don't elevate him as a chair. You have the authority to demand an independent audit. You are either against unethical, illegal actions, or you're not. And if you just hold 800,000 Cobb residents, you're fine with it at your own political peril.
Thirty seconds.
Because we deserve better, we demand that, and we will fight for better. Rest assured, hundreds of new voters and taxpayer payers just started paying attention and they just watched him make excuses for fraud. You had a chance to lead with the integrity our kids deserve, but you chose to protect fraud instead. We will not forget this and neither will they.
Next speaker is Michael Bussa.
I don't know a lot about public board meetings. I do know about marketing. And in my mind, I would never tell a client to remain silent or double down on something like this. I would probably try to get ahead of it because silence leaves room for questions. And people who have questions like to go looking for answers. You told us earlier, we have no recourse. There is no law that we can hold them to. There is no complaint that we can file. There is no ethical policy that we can cite. We cannot force you to do anything. We cannot force you to call for an audit. Although, an audit is the only thing that would clear this board of suspicion and prove that his private misdoings were private and did not cross over. That was my mind, by the way. How can, I don't know, do we have like two sides of our brain? Like one where we make really bad judgment calls in our personal business? But then, you know, when it comes to public tax dollars, you just turn that off and it's only good decisions. I understand. He does not have sole control over anything. He does have influence over everything. We need, I need answers. I would like to know, who was he appointed and where? Who supported him?
Thirty seconds.
Do we care? I have questions. Nobody responded to my email. So we will conclude to ask questions and we're not going to give this up.
Next speaker is Michael Bussa to be followed by Stephen Lang.
I'm Michael Gardner, a parent of a third grader in Cobb School. This week, we had our school event honoring our veteran. My daughter played the national anthem on the guitar, "Chorale Inovation." Our kindergarten students gave a performance that put smiles on the faces of everyone there. At this event, I met the family of one of our special education students who is on stage, was on stage performing with her peers. And the family could have looked at her. She didn't sing, which surprised the family because she was singing in her head of 1940s. But she's there on stage doing the movement with the helpful fun of our bilingual parrot. I mention the bilingual part because it's a favorite of the family, her first Spanish. I learned that she has not zoned for her school, but we are able to give her the services that her other school cannot. That's a common refrain from our families of students with special needs. They have to shop around a different school to get the help of their child needs. This student is not going to be any of the data points the district likes to use to determine success. She can't be reduced to a milestone tour. She's not around in her graduation rate. She has unique needs that require leadership that lets pass all of the best in the metro pipe and sees her. That values her every bit as much as they value a triple A credit rating. That sees the challenges in front of her, but also sees the tremendous potential in what she can become if we do the right thing at every step of her journey. Students like her need leaders up there who are within our schools daily. Seeing our students, meeting our families, having these conversations about what really matters. Leaders should do the work of engaging our community rather than dividing and separating people. It is clear that we need a change in leadership and that is why I have chosen to take on the chair and run first for next year.
Next speaker is Stephen Bean to be followed by Candy Stewart.
It struck my attention that there have been other allegations of misappropriation of funds. Since public comment is only limited to 15, I'm giving the victim's statements priority. When you choose to become a candidate or public servant legally and ethically, there is no difference between what you do in your private actions and what you do publicly. Everything gets documented and everything gets scrutinized. This business, owned and operated by a school board member, has been given 17 consecutive one-star reviews on Google, including the following public allegations of theft. If I can give this company a zero, I would. They took over $3,000 from me. Next review, I paid them well over 4K for me to receive nothing. Next review, they were working on a settlement. So we let them work on this leaving since we paid them several thousand dollars that they would have our best interest at heart. Needless to say, they took the money and didn't help us in the least. Received, received a certified letter of mail this past Friday afternoon saying that we have a lien on our house from the government now because this company took our money and did not help us. Next review, do not use this company. Lines are disconnected. We are unable to get in touch with the representative. My husband has spent thousands of dollars for this company hoping for a resolution. No resolution was made. Currently filing a complaint with the Better Business Bureau. Final review, this company took over 8K pro me. Now I cannot get in touch with them. Their phones have been disconnected. Beyond the public comments, there's clearly a pattern of behavior that clearly indicates you should be nowhere near a $2 billion budget. Cobb can do better, a lot better. And I hope a forensic audit performs at the earliest opportunity and that there are two better candidates who can fill that office. You're either in Taylor or Financial Park or you're not.
Sir. Our next speaker is Candy Stewart to be followed by Melissa Martin.
Good evening. I've been a Cobb school parent and volunteer since 2012, serving in classrooms and on foundation boards. As a scout leader and chaperone for out-of-state field trips. My personal life choices and reputation allow me to be goals. I've been building up Cobb school communities all this time, including paying close attention to this board since 2020. I am not somebody trying to tear down Cobb County schools. I grew up in a Roswell public school that graduated from University of Virginia, where violation of the school honor code had only a single sanction. The offender was required to leave the university because they had shown themselves unworthy to continue in it. One of you has shown yourself to be egregiously unworthy to pick where you are. One of you has violated board policies and codes of ethics, including an admonition in this board's own code of ethics. Take no private action that will compromise the board or school system administration. Also, a board member must, quote, "file annually with the local superintendent and with the state board of education" a written statement certifying that he or she is in compliance with this code of ethics. Can you do that when just last month, while still a board member, you signed an admission of mishandling $250,000 of your client's money, then tried to have sealed? It matters that board members have shown themselves trustworthy with money when their legal functions include billion-dollar budgets, purchases, the milled rate, and even ensuring that CCSD employees are bonded. And at this point, I question whether this board member could pass the background check to be a cookie parent for a Girl Scout troop. This board member must resign. He no longer belongs in a position of community trust to lead Cobb's largest employer and our schools, including 100,000 students. Is this their role model? Is this the best we can do for them? Shame on all of you to think this is okay. We deserve better.
Next speaker is Melissa Martin to be followed by Eric Carroll.
Wow. This afternoon's meeting was something else. It's extremely ironic that you all want to humanize yourselves as just regular people. As if the public, you seek to hold you accountable, accountable are not regular people. Over two years ago, this school district orchestrated a sudden public comment line move that led to some of us losing our spots and being referred to as bad guys. For having a difference of opinion, something the board chairman just said this afternoon is welcome. Why do you all get to be just regular moms, dads, and grandparents and we're the bad guys? We're your bosses. You are elected officials. If you want to just be regular people, maybe volunteer at the library. You chose this. You don't get to use the public for votes and then run away from all criticisms and accountability. Also, calling these hard-working men liars is completely 100% unacceptable. After all these, does our days on testing, they are brave enough to stand before you and bring attention to the safety of our children? They ensure our children have safe transportation to and from school. We will not let your characterization of them as liars stand. Time, your boss.
Next speaker is Tia Howard to be followed by Lisa Seager.
Well, my name is Eric Carroll. Fourteen years in college, we're 29. Two time elected Bama college workers, always be here. I came before you in April. Told you the problems that we're having. I'll get to see any of you. Contact me that first thing. Nobody. Yet. From the earlier meetings today, we're all live. I challenge any of you to come. Let's sit down one-on-one with the facts that we draw from. Let's look at it. But say y'all don't want to talk about it. Y'all want to take secondhand information. You ask somebody that's probably job overload if they were to tell you, yeah, he's right. He's right, you know, we're having issues in terms of that. They're thinking, they're going to fire me if I tell you that. People that work for you are intimidated. And I can't believe you said that I came up here to do this for brownie points, to be in the spotlight. I'd rather be home. I'd a whole lot rather be home, not talking about it. But you can tell how emotional I've been doing this, but I've stuck my neck out for them and probably been in all that for me. And I'm not trying to scare anybody. That's not the intention. We're trying to bring the attention that we need. Tell. When you tell, I can't reiterate that for you. We can tell you stories. I've held for the county for about three years. I see it for faith. I've seen it for faith. Tell that to me. I'll tell you all about it. It's not a lie. I'm no liar. Danny Henderson's no liar. Pinker Bailey is no liar. I don't care what you say. We are not lying. We're telling you the truth. You can hide from whatever you want to.
Good evening. I'm here to speak tonight about integrity. Can you either have it or you don't? Speaking of what one must have, I want to remind you all that there are three pillars to the fraud triangle. Pressure, opportunity, and rationalization. One of these board members found all three in a private business and committed fraud, which he agreed to in a consent judgment. All three of these must be present to commit fraud. And all we're asking for is guardrails here to ensure that this pattern of behavior does not continue with our tax dollars for our students in our schools. It's a simple ask. We will not be moved in our demands for transparency. We will not be moved in our support of our fleet bus, our fleetmen, who take care of the buses who deliver our students to and from. And I will not stand for them to be called liars when you don't have the integrity or the basic curiosity to go sit down with them and have a conversation. We will not be moved from these demands and we are demanding transparency, especially when someone involved in civil Rico heads our audit committee. As an accountant, I am appalled. Chairman was right about one thing this afternoon. This is personal. It was personal business that didn't have the funds for 12 AMX payments over four months totaling $274,000 affected. Let's be clear. It wasn't taking company equipment. It wasn't a tax withhold. This was fraud. And you have a responsibility to investigate and protect our tax dollars, our students, and our slime.
Next speaker is Barbara Howell Slater.
Good evening. My name is Christina Williams. I'm a proud mother of two children, registered from Cobb County School. One of them all from data program, Justice Backstone, and one from Campbell High School, Ivy Brother. My daughter China, the Campbell graduate, is the founder of Power Public Schools, our post-stem-based, AI-enabled, middle and high school design to give our students the field they will need to thrive in the future. I may not say all the technical parts work, but what I do know is that this school represents the next stage of education, not just for South Cobb, but for the entire community. I've worked in the tech industry for years. I am a local employee and I see firsthand how rapidly the world is changing. Artificial intelligence is not a trend. It is a transfer in every field, every job, and every pathway. Our children will walk into it. And right now, most schools simply are not equipped to give kids, students, the real skills they need to lead, create, and compete in the new world. That is why Power Public Schools is so important. As a parent and a community member, I believe Cobb County has a rare opportunity. The chance to be ahead of the curve rather than behind it. The chance to invest in an innovative model that brings cutting-edge learning, college practice, and real workforce to South Cobb. Our students deserve options. They deserve opportunities. And they deserve a school that prepares them not just for today, but for the future that is already here. I strongly encourage you to approve Power Public Schools. Thank you.
Thirty seconds. Our next speaker is Barbara Howell Shager. Sorry, I did it wrong. And you're followed by Ricky May Parker.
Good evening. Here on behalf of a current Cobb educator who does not feel that they are able to speak on their own behalf out of fear of reprisal. The most pressing concern that they had when I spoke with them today was the lack of input from teachers and stakeholders in the decision-making process. They're not being heard by the superintendent. And thus, important decisions are made in the absence of their input, the input of the most important people, those who are on the front line. To point, after attending this afternoon's working session, I witnessed the superintendent request $2+ million for canines to protect schools without providing any advance information to the board member. While it sounds good to me to use canines to protect our schools, it does seem that more input, more time would be reasonable to expend that amount of money. Another example of the chilling of oversight and input is the removal of public comment from board recordings. And then, there's a double standard. When a teacher expresses their personal opinion about a public figure, they are disciplined. But when a board member
Thirty seconds.
misappropriates funds in their personal business, that is personal. The educator I spoke to also suggested that the superintendent conduct listening sessions with stakeholders, teachers, parents, and others before making decisions. Thank you.
Wow. I had another topic to speak about tonight, but I changed my course of action after the October 16 meeting last month. The board announced Bus Driver Appreciation Week and produced and proceeded to call forward employees to be recognized. However, the employees called by name were not active school bus drivers for Cobb County School District. They were transportation management. And the actual school bus drivers that were in the picture were not even recognized by their name. I'm here tonight to ask the board to please invite actual active school bus drivers working for Cobb County School District the next time Bus Driver Appreciation Week is recognized here and know their names. Because they are not, because they are the ones actively driving school buses every day or mostly every day and taking on the high demand that encompasses the career of driving a school bus. If the board of Cobb County would like to recognize their management teams of transportation, please initiate an hour, or a day, or a week for them. The school bus drivers of Cobb County are at the bottom of the transportation organization chart. This is the chart that used to be in the book that y'all used to give us for transportation, if you don't print anymore. The school bus drivers and monitor the very bottom. The board had the opportunity last month to elevate this position, even if just for a minute. And I believe the board failed to do so.
Thirty seconds.
You know, it would be a pleasant surprise if you would go out, take some time out of your day, go see the school bus driver at the school and show him your smiling faces and thank them face-to-face. Please do a little more planning next time. There's a Bus Driver Appreciation Week and put all of the focus on Cobb County's school bus drivers. I wonder if you have a big problem with the board and the way you're handling this. This is just mind-boggling to everybody here.
It's time, ma'am. Time, ma'am.
Money, not wine!
Well, again, I'm Andrew Cole, Cobb grad, Cobb dad. And because even broken clocks are right twice a day, I want to say that I agree with so much of what was said this afternoon in the fully agreed-upon board statement on the matters. But because bipartisan motion, you've made it impossible for elected representatives from our most populated areas in our county to seek at their own board meetings. I'll say some of my points. Because I at least am for now. Stay out of the living room. Leave it to the ballot boxes. Don't invade the personal lives of staff, students, and parents. Otherwise, our students suffer. You're spot on. But is this coming from the board majority who just recently gave hats on the head to our district leaders who moved ferociously to oust teachers for things they said off-the-clock? Statements, posts, not crimes? And the thing is, is this coming from the board majority whose prior chair would send in district emails, blog posts of Clint Eastwood-esque grumblings about society today and would actively recommend political candidates and how people should vote on referenda? Is this coming from the board majority that never tugs on the leash when district leaders have PR campaigns to actively promote political partisanship and stoke culture war fear in emails and CTLS updates to every parent? Your strong end argument about nothing happening during term to warn action is fine. That's not the issue. The issue is committing fraud and admitting to it during the year 2025. There's right and there is wrong. I will not be moved. You do realize the utterly hypocritical way you speak, think, act, and view the world? So much of what you said today is true. You don't live it. You don't mean it. This was all a nothing-to-see-here-folks charade, and there's plenty to see. We deserve to know and hear even more. Address the concerns about our county and district reputation. Did you know that we're the only school district in the galaxy with a AAA credit rating from selected firms? I don't want to lose that.
And now here's the countdown.
Okay, we are back.
And that's a round.